Alright folks, 7:37. And then we're gonna open our meeting tonight. And, uh, Mr. Carroll is on his way in. Uh, David, can you, uh...
Need a motion, or?
Yeah, you got the minute, motion for the minutes?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I move that the CPC approved the December 6, 2022 meeting minutes.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing done, all of the papers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? I need a roll call vote. Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr.? Redlaw?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Now I need your name now, if you keep forgetting. I'm a dummy.
Mr. Hayden, can you hear me?
Oh, hi Ryan, you're on there.
I'm here.
Did you, did you hear the motion for the minutes?
Yeah, he did, I think, because he said aye.
He did, okay, Mr. Mr. Ryan, what, Ryan, what is your, uh...
Aye.
And Mr. Johnston?
Aye.
Myself is aye, so that's unanimous. Alright, what else we have there, you got the...
Yep, uh, so we get minutes, um, I guess we, so Danielle, we could do the A and R or Transportation Committee?
Um, let's do the A and R first.
Yeah, because we have to wait for the hearing, that's time certain.
Yeah, the hearing one is a...
Oh, no, the A and R doesn't have a hearing.
No, the A and R is not time certain.
So A and R is One Elm Street?
One Elm Street.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry.
Is there someone who want to get in?
No, I accidentally minimized it, I've been with Rock here.
Sorry. Alright. So is there someone to present the A and R to us, sir?
Can we go here?
Right there, fine.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Vern the Blank and Mike Ten Zero is with me. Um, we're here to present the A and R plan for One Elm Street. Basically, we're, we're just, uh, taking a parcel of land from the Middleton lot at Five Elm Street, combining so that we have enough frontage and area to, uh, qualify for the A and R endorsement. We assume you have copies that have...
This is gonna create frontage on Elm Street, is that correct?
Yes, we, we...
It's not gonna wholly be in North Reading?
That's correct.
Okay, so you still have to go to Middleton?
Middleton, yes.
And if Middleton finds a reason, I don't know what they would find.
I have discussed it with the Middleton Town Planner also, um, she did not find anything that would prevent their board from endorsing, um, but their board pulled hearing it until, uh, later in January.
Okay. Alright, so without, we're gonna, we're gonna sign off, but they also have to sign off?
Right.
On these, okay. Alright. And is there any questions from anyone? From the board?
I think it's, I, what I can see is pretty straightforward, the triangle portion, the seventy-three point three feet additional frontage on Elm Street added to this One Elm Street provides the frontage, square footage is there. Um, and then there's also a, um, what's it called, lot, uh, I'm sorry, what's the back lot? Is gonna grab some parcel D from that, right? But that is a, that one is pretty much purely a Middleton A and R?
Yes.
Um, really? So Danielle, are we really just signing off on the One Elm Street one, really?
The parcel A?
Or do we need to even, you know, be part of the second, you know, conveyance done D? In the sense that...
One of the lots is entirely in Middleton, but it's a plan that shows some lot lines changing in North Reading and some property in North Reading. So I, I think the way this is set up without having to do two completely separate A and R plans that excluded other property, I, I think it's just simplest for, and certainly, I'll sign off on this, um, as it is.
So Vern, my family, we, we spent a lot of the time, uh, over the last two weeks doing puzzles, because we like puzzles. This is a puzzle. So you had your fun, I guess, huh?
Yeah.
This is, uh, quite a puzzle. Not as much, I guess, the North Reading lot, but the other ones, boy.
Yeah, the other one...
Creative.
It was.
So do you foresee any problems on the, the lot fronting Boston Street with the wetlands?
Um...
For yourself, I mean, again, it doesn't really impact us as much, but it's...
No, we're, we're, we're gonna propose a common drive, so we're not dealing with the wetlands. We're gonna, the existing drive on Fa- uh, Five Elm, um, we're gonna propose to access the lot from common drive, which we have to get approval from, uh, Middleton. Special permit from Middleton.
That's a special permit?
I mean, that's, these are right special permit. I don't know if Middleton's any founder of common drives away, or...
Yeah, that's a, that's a, a lot of shared driveway there for, for five, but...
So again, by an endorsement by this committee, North Reading, we're, we're endorsing kind of, Danielle, anything we're seeing North Reading, right? I mean, even though it's onto that other parcel?
You are.
But, but it's not a complete lot, but I get what you mean, I mean, it's mainly, I guess it's mainly one, One Elm.
It's One Elm, which, which has...
Yeah, this is Shannon Barrera for Three Elm.
Wait, hey, just a minute, please?
I was just curious if the driveway would be on...
Ma'am?
Between No. 1 and North Reading.
She can't hear though, it's, she's... So, so Shannon, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, and it's not your fault, I know it's, it's difficult sometimes with the Zoom, but we're, we're still, the, the board still has some questions, but then we'll put it out to the public and you'll definitely be asked to comment, okay?
Wait, be sorry.
Yeah, no, no worries, no worries.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep.
Alright, so, basically, um, One Elm has enough square footage, doesn't have enough frontage. This gives One Elm the amount of frontage it needs to comply, even though part of the frontage is in, is in Middleton. Okay. Alright. Jeremiah, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I mean, especially reading Danielle's memo, I mean, I don't see anything that stands out to interfere.
Alright, Ryan? Do you have any questions, Ryan?
Yes, I have question, oh, he's not ready.
What do you mean?
Uh, what'd you say? Go ahead, Ryan.
I don't think he has one.
That's, that's not the...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Alright. So we are gonna open it up for, for questions from the audience that's present, and then we will go to the Zoom. Ms. Robin?
Uh, to Danielle, um, a motion or whatever it is to accept, uh, this plan as it, as it is, shouldn't there be a caveat of some sort that is dependent on Middleton approving that part of it?
But it's not a legal lot, otherwise... The, uh, the CPC is not able to put conditions on A and R plans, it's just a determination of frontage. If the Middleton Planning Board doesn't endorse this, it won't be valid, but we're not allowed to put conditions.
Okay. So now, any more questions from North, uh, from the people present? Alright, folks on Zoom, Shannon, did you have a question? Please state your name and address.
Uh, this is Shannon Barrera for Three Elm Street. I was just curious where the driveway would be? If it would be right up against our property or between...
Yeah, can you mute everybody in the town, keep it on mute, so... If I mute all, it'd be us too.
It does, yeah.
I just don't wanna mute the person who's trying to mute.
So, so Shannon, your question is? Where, where is the driveway gonna be for One Elm or for the other property?
I'm guessing for the back lot, for the back lot?
So that's gonna be the one on, um...
It's the, Shannon, is it the most northern lot, that's the one on North Reading's land, it's, uh, number One Elm, is that the one you're referring to?
No, I think she's talking about the other one.
So you, you're asking about the access on...
I'm not sure why they're... We're right up against Five, where there's a driveway currently going to the right side of the house, and I didn't know if it'd be driveway to access the back lot.
You're the corner lot, is that correct, Shan?
Yeah, lot Three Elm.
Yeah, she's in Middleton.
Yeah, she's the corner lot.
Three Middleton.
Yes, okay, so...
Middleton will make that decision.
The One Elm Street parcel is on the other side of Three Elm, and that's what we're kind of really looking at tonight, because that's property, uh, part of it is in North Reading. The Middleton Planning Board is gonna have, gonna also review this, and they're the ones that will figure out where the driveway for that back, uh, Boston Street lot will come from. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other questions from folks on Zoom? Mr. Mills, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Dan Mills, I have Three Elm Drive, North Reading. Um, just had a couple, couple of questions that I made. So actually, um, I believe it's the board's obligation to review the five parcels. There are five parcels are adjusting the North Reading, portions of North Reading property. Uh, looks like there's three lots that are being modified, or three, three lots. Lot Number One Elm Street, Five Elm Street, and then Zero Boston Street. They all involve property within North Reading. I think Ms. Barrera's question was perhaps the Zero Boston Street. It's basically the property that's behind One Eight Nine Boston Street and Five Elm Street. Is there access, that is the, that is proposed to be a movable presidential lot? That's one of my first question. Some, the plan's somewhat misleading in the title and the application. The application states it's for One Elm Street only, and in fact, the plan has three pieces of property that are being reviewed, and, and signed on by both North Reading CPC and Middleton Planning Board. So I guess the questions that you're pursuing, three, you're developing three movable lots?
Yes.
Say it.
It's a...
Two addition.
It is a fair point made by Dan that, because I just did notice finally looking at the plan, that it has signature areas for both, Vern, that you have, for both, but you are trying to create more, you know, you're A and R-ing more than this one lot, so it would stand that you wanna have more than just, it says five in one.
There's one, two, there's three parcels that I see here. There is no parcel C, right? Parcel A, B, and D.
There's, I mean, because you're modifying existing, um, Five, which, Danielle, does that need an A and R if you're just modifying it? You're, in this case, it's, it's, uh, it's shedding and grabbing, if you will. Square footage, just a tricky one.
The A and R can show multiple lot line changes from multiple...
Yeah, what I mean though is it, is Five technically, because of the changes, that's, that, that falls under the A and R, right? It's an A and R for Five as well, right?
As long as every lot shown has frontage, um, in existing public way, then, then yes, it would be, it would fall by.
Alright, so we're trying to do One, Five, Three, and there's another one, right?
I think, I think the, the A and R is to create, is to create that, uh, that lot by adding that frontage on. And the, the, the other thing, changes that are made in this plan are to facilitate that change.
Right.
So that's the, that's the main goal, as long as it doesn't create a new, uh, a, uh, non-conforming lot at any particular point, it doesn't matter what the...
Oh, so that lot then does not have to be changed, it's just modified?
Yeah.
And registered, you know, because the...
I don't know, I don't know what Middleton's requirements are, but it's four, it's plus forty thousand square feet, so in North Reading, that would be a building lot.
The plan does do what, for an intended to do, and that is to create that lot.
Right, I appreciate that, then, the explanation, okay.
Did you understand that, Dan?
Yeah, but just to follow up, so Zero Boston Street is currently a non-de bouable lot right now, Zero Boston Street, I believe?
I think with what I read, it's not a legal, it's not a legal lot now, so...
That's, yeah.
By, by removing the lot line, or it's a lot line to be removed between parcel D and Zero Boston Street?
Oh, there's parcel C.
That's in Middleton.
I'm sorry, parcel C. Well, it's... I understand it's in Middleton, but it requires North Reading property and wanted to be zoning in both North Reading and Middleton.
That's correct.
Right. Does it have, it has frontage, right, Danielle?
Yes.
As long as it has, we think it has frontage on, on Boston Street.
Boston Street, and they're trying not to cross the wetlands, but they could.
So to Dan's point, then, if you are having to, you know, you're, you only have fifteen thousand square feet on Zero Boston Street right now, and you need to get up to forty, you're using Nor- a portion of, you know, eight thousand of North Reading, um, wouldn't that require an A and R?
Well, this is the, this...
I get that, but what I mean is, again, to Dan's original point, is the plan will land for Five Elm Street and Boston Street and One Elm Street. It doesn't list anything about Zero Boston Street or that law creation.
Well, it just is...
Or Boston Street.
It says Boston.
Is it supposed to be a zero in front of it, is that just a typo then?
Oh.
Shouldn't it say Zero Boston Street?
Maybe should, uh...
Just to be specific, you know, because we are, to Warren's point, if one in the middle here, you know, uh, call it Three Elm, was never an issue, then I agree, that doesn't need to be changed, or an A and R doesn't need to be filed, but to Dan's point, we are definitely creating a lot formerly fifteen thousand square feet, not we, but Middleton will be asked to, and we're being asked to acknowledge that it requires eight thousand in North Reading. That is a lot that's attempting to be created, so that's, and it's an A and R. So there's not a lot of, not a lot we can do about it, but it should, at least, the plan should at least...
Reflect that.
Reflect that this is for Zero as well. Am I right or wrong?
Uh, when I looked at the application, it stated Five, I'm sorry, it said One Elm Street, I believe.
I got it right, I'm doing it.
And, uh, it's, it's not just One Elm Street, it's, it's, it's more than that.
Yeah, it doesn't say anything about Boston Street at all on here, so it's One Elm Street and Five Elm Street.
Yeah, and that's what the description too, um, that you, that you filled out Mike too, it has just the, uh, the One and the Five. I mean, seems like that needs to be, uh, included here.
Yeah, the location and description of the property is not One Elm Street, North Reading alone, it's all of that. You see that, Danielle?
Yeah, the Form A only mentions One Elm Street, is that right?
Well, it's because we thought we're just dealing with North Reading in this application.
Well, it has the, it has the Middleton Planning Board signature page on it, so...
You got everything, everything is on it.
I was gonna say, if you didn't have the Middleton on it, and this is just purely North Reading, then I could get that, but you have the full signature series for Middleton's Planning Board as well.
The title of the plan or the application?
Uh, the plan itself.
The plan, it's just, is it because we're gonna have Zero Boston in the title block?
That, 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 yeah, but the application is, you've got property from... No, that's property from there, going back to One.
The, the A and R plan shows the three addresses really clearly, I just don't know if, so I see that it's not, it's not reflected on the Form A.
Right.
And I see that, and, and then was there also concern about the title of the plan, because it's shown on the plan itself, I just wasn't sure.
Well, I mean, I might be, I'm not an expert in this, you know, you're, Vern, you're the, you know, survey expert, but it just seems like if you're doing an A and R plan, that it should, and it's for an, an address, it should state the address. Call me stupid, but... So I think there's, there's got, you've got two in there, but you're missing one.
An address on Boston Street.
I mean, it's an easy fix, right?
I mean, the address is in the plan, it's just, you're talking about the title, where it just says
Yeah.
By Middleton Street and Boston? I mean, I can...
Yeah, the Boston Street must...
Take a sharpie, I can put a zero in front of the Boston, certainly.
No, I get that, Vern, but, and I don't mean to, I don't mean to really belabor the point, it's just, to me though, if, uh, if it's a plan that's gonna be signed by two boards, Mylar, whatever, registered, you might wanna have it actually include the, an address that you're trying to add A and R.
Sure.
And it's not, you know, so, and, and is a Sharpie kind of the du jour way of fixing a, a plan that's not correct? Like, when you have two commissions, they're asking to sign it, you know, I don't know, maybe it is, but I would just think it would make more sense. I understand you're going in front of Middleton in two weeks, that you fix the plan, and you go to Middleton, and you come back to us on the twenty-fourth, and we sign off on it.
It is okay to make a hand recommendation, if that's like, you know, what we'd like to do.
I'm just interested in what Middleton's gonna do, to be dead honest. And to me, it has, at least the, the landmass that we're looking at is ninety percent Middleton? We're only looking at about ten percent of North Reading land.
Right.
So, to me, and it's not the, the Planning Board Commission for, I mean, Planning Board meeting for them is in three months, it's in two weeks. So I don't see a huge problem with just waiting until Middleton acts on it.
Well, then we're kind of...
We have, we have a time, we have timeline.
So what is it?
Three weeks, from now, from the time that they...
We have a meeting in two though, right?
I'm sorry?
We have a meeting in two weeks, don't we, the twenty-fourth, or that is three weeks?
Not the seventeenth. I think even the seventeenth would have been two weeks.
Well, again, it's, it's really up to Middleton, but why don't we fix, at a minimum for us, we fix the, uh, put in the one...
See, this is, this is received December nineteenth, right, so what's the, when does the clock run for that?
I mean, that day, or the next day it starts, so twenty-one days.
Starts then, and it's twenty-one days from there, right? It's very quick for an A and R plan.
So did you file with Middleton at the same date you filed with us, you filed, or you filed with us first?
We filed with you first.
I, I think the easiest solution is honestly to write in the missing number on the plan. I, I think that it is acceptable to do it that way, um, otherwise I think we would have to either deny, schedule another meeting, I mean...
And that would, you have to be, like, quicker, like, next work.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know the deadlines, so...
Your availability, can I tell you where your availability is?
No, we can just deny it right now. I, I just said, you can deny it.
Excuse, excuse me, excuse me.
We're talking about doing a Sharpie.
Excuse me! Kim?
And then come back and review. Yeah, that's kind of what you're saying.
You guys, I'm seriously, why don't we do a Sharpie?
I know, some fun.
So, Kim, if you're, um, if you're listening on, online, or, we, we're up against a deadline, unfortunately, so we're, our hands are tied, uh, because, uh, it's gonna be beyond, our next meeting would be beyond that date.
That's correct.
The other, you know, I, I guess, yeah. We could always ask that, we could ask... What?
It gets constructively approved.
So that's, thus the reason why, just to write in the, the One Boston, so...
Zero.
Zero. Zero, sorry, Zero Boston Street. And again, I'm, I'm fine with that, I just think that, you know, if you're coming to, if you're presenting a plan, it should have the addresses that you're trying to, um, get an A and R for. So, I guess we're good, you wanna do motion, or, there's nothing, nothing much we can do.
Yeah, I think we're, I would do a motion. You wanna, you gotta turn it on so you can hear Dan. Or Ryan, excuse me.
I can read it though, I mean, I get the motion, we don't have to have Ryan.
No, no, you can, no, I would have you read the motion.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
But we have to hear this.
I see Dan's hand is up, and just...
Well, let's, let's see what Dan has to say.
I have a few, a few, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dan.
I have a couple of follow-up questions if I could.
Go ahead.
Um, so there's two green lines on the plan that was online, and I'm not sure what those are, it was confusing to me, is there some clarification on that? One crosses probably One Eight Nine Boston Street, and one crosses the formerly Old Flint Road or Old Boston Road, two rods wide, probably.
That's the width of the road.
That's a former road?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember seeing that, it's, Dan, it's the former road?
Okay, so it's like a paper street?
Uh, was it, you know, was it a natural street, but...
Okay.
Yeah, the old Flint Road.
Yeah, it looks like Old Boston's, Boston Road. Old Flint or Old Boston Road, it's the same name, but the Boston Street took its, took its place, I believe, they never built it out.
Okay, so those lines are not...
That's, the green lines just show the, the width of the road, what would have been there?
Yeah.
The two rods.
The reference, the reference points, they're not any property line that proposed or other one?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
Wouldn't have been less confusing if those weren't in there, then.
Yeah.
Yes. Anything else, Dan?
Yeah, just, so at this stage, just for clarification, at this stage, um, there's no, there's no assessment of floodplain, of intersection site distance of any proposed driveways, of any wetland crossings, of any soil for any septic systems, um, by topography that might be, um, challenging to development, um, that the...
If the, Dan, if the, if there was a situation where there was a, a, a big wetland and, and, although the frontage exists, but it was illusory as far as being able to use it, then that would not qualify for the A and R, but, but that's not the only, that's really the only real issue.
Right, or a cliff.
Right.
If it had illusory frontage over, and if there was no capability to access the land from the, from the frontage.
So because the wetland in the brook, um, those are not considered obstacles for that, that they'll be building illusory requirements?
Well, no, if it's, uh, it would have to be significant, in other words, probably more than five thousand square feet, you know, of, of, uh, improvement to get, to get access to the land, which that wouldn't be the case here, it would be a culvert or something relatively. If you, if you were crossing the brook, it would be something relatively normal, as far as a, a structure goes, to allow the water to continue as slow as it is, and to get access to the property. I mean, a serious, big, serious wetland that you'd have to, that you couldn't cross, that would be illusory.
Okay, and, uh, I don't mean to take up all your time, I just have two more points that I just want to...
Go ahead.
Um, what is so that the fact that you're requiring land from another community in order to meet the minimums in... Um, what is so that the fact that you're requiring land from another community in order to meet the minimums in North Reading, does not prevent us from moving forward, meaning, you need land in order to get the forty thousand square feet, you need land in order to get the hundred sixty foot project in North Reading?
No, what, what we, what, what Danielle did is check with, basically, with, both terms are the same requirements. So the fact that we both have the same requirements means that the A and R that we would approve would also, uh, have the same, be subject to the same requirements in Middleton, which are equal to us.
The last one, I've seen on other A and R plans, they show a building envelope, meaning they take into account all the setbacks, and they show you what area, what part of the property it was going to form. Is that something that is required, or that's something that's just fulfilled by other applicants?
It, it is not a requirement, Dan, that's just what the applicants put on their plans. They gotta, they gotta, they gotta comply with the setbacks.
For a building permit.
For a, for a building permit, right.
They're gonna have all the things that you mentioned, septic, um, conservation, if, if there's a crossing.
Not for an A and R, not a that.
No, not, not for this, this just creates a lot, allows them to go to the next level, which would be, for, you know, do all, go through all those other.
It doesn't even guarantee them a building permit.
That's correct, just, it just gives them a lot.
That's it.
It's all it does, it gives them a lot, and the rest is on them to make a comply. All right, Dan?
Thank you for being so generous with your time.
No problem.
Thank you, Dan.
No problem. Anybody else, do I see anybody else? I don't see anyone else. Okay, any other questions from the public in the room? David?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to endorse, uh, as approval not required, the plan entitled Plan of Land Five Elm Street, Zero Boston Street, and One Elm Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, drawn by LeBlanc, Survey Associates Inc.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
May I interrupt, please? Excuse me, allow me to interrupt.
Wha- what, would, who is this? This?
Yes, I'm, uh, I'm very remotely.
Who, who, who's speak, who's speaking, please?
That clarification is, what sort of impact assessment has been made with regard to drainage? The reason my question is, I'm a resident in Middleton at Four Elm Street, abiding three Elm Street and North Reading, and across the street from this proposed.
Sir?
For decades.
Sir?
Yes.
What's your name?
My name is Paul Reed.
Your address?
Resident, Four Elm Street, for resident, Four Elm Street, Middleton, Massachusetts.
Okay. So, this, an A and R plan, they have to prove they have enough frontage and area. Not even area, just frontage? Just frontage? There is.
Excuse me, please. I, I understand the audio is bad. My question is regarding.
Uh, sir, I'm trying to touch.
Problems from North Reading.
Yes.
Draining.
Sorry.
Switch river. My question is, what assessment has been made regarding a change in the landscape, regarding the driveway, et cetera, that would impact it?
So I understand.
Specifically flooding of my property, and that's what's in the tab.
Okay, I understand your question completely, however, that is not, the A and R has, does not do any of that. Well, if, when, when the, uh, if the thing isn't proof of A and R, one goes to Middleton, and they want to build on it, that's when those things would be addressed.
Be addressed. My apologies about my understanding of A and R.
That's okay.
I don't either.
Yeah, thanks for the questions anyway.
Or not entirely, clearly. So do we, do we still have comments, or do we?
No, go ahead.
Do you want, I'll just read it again, sorry.
Yeah, start, start again.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to endorse, as approval not required, the plan entitled Plan of Land Five Elm Street, Zero Boston Street, Middleton, Massachusetts, and One Elm Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, drawn by LeBlanc, Survey Associates Inc.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second by Mr. Pierce. Is there any other discussion by the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ryan, are you there? I don't know if Ryan's there.
He might have been muted.
Give me a second.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, I, I need, I will take a roll call vote now, because this is a, a Zoom meeting, hybrid meeting, thank you. Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Redloff? Mr. Johnston?
Aye.
Ryan?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have to get the pens.
And Mr. Hayden is aye.
Mr. Hayden, aye.
It is unanimous vote?
It is unanimous vote.
So Ryan, you'd have to come in. To sign, and I don't think there'll be anybody in the office tomorrow, so would you be available Thursday?
Yes, please, yes.
Right.
So we can sign now, though, right?
Yes, Danielle's going to get the.
Mylar.
The Mylar pen. So. All right. We need, we need that, the sharpie.
I, I was gonna bring one, I haven't been talking.
I got one, but it's a thicker one, I was kinda looking for the, but it's, it's a bigger one.
Usually carry the, you need the, you need the thin ones, though.
Yeah, I know.
You got a thin one, Warren?
A lot of these, I think, are each out. Yeah, this one.
Usually have.
Yeah, this one's pretty sharp.
Danielle's, Danielle went for the real thin ones.
All right.
All right.
This is the fine.
All right, so what, uh, just, just.
Well, yeah, she's got finer ones, they're, they're micro, they're micro points.
I always have the top. I'm moving to you.
Yeah, sign, sign in the right place. David, so Danielle, Ryan said he could come in Thurs, he thinks he can come in on Thursday to sign this, all right? So if, if Vern doesn't mind leaving it with us? So I'm wearing this because it's nice. You're a good man. You're a good man. Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Shirley.
Do you want me to roll this up in?
No, that's okay, I'll just, um, I'll just.
Thank you, Vern, very much.
Thank you, Vern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
This is your plan.
Yeah, Debbie.
It's all right.
It's always good.
It's a good start.
Yeah, thanks.
It's tricky, though, huh? A and R, like, when you get these thirty.
I went to, this.
Single lot ones are the ones that are just like so easy.
So easy.
You would have loved, I went to, we went to classes years ago, Chris, I think you went too, you done it.
I wa, I went with, uh.
A and R, is it, there's, there's a book called the A and, the A and R Handbook.
Right. I have it.
And they ha, you have it?
And I have gone through it.
Right.
And like you said, it's, it's pretty neat, you, there's not much, there's been a little case law with the illusory kind of access, and that's a bit about it.
We can't, we, we've taken out a couple.
No, but there's also, there's also, if you, if you have, like, something, if you finger lots, or if you finger, you can, you can also deny for those.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a number of, um, reasons, but I've seen it all, so. And I, and I know this, this say that a lot, pretty good.
Danielle, so Ryan, I just was talking with Ryan.
Yeah, I see people come in Thursday morning.
Yeah. Oh, that was going everybody, huh?
Yeah.
That's fine.
And then Danielle, so you wrote in the zero on that?
I've heard it in.
Yeah, okay, and I, and I added it, you know, in here, it wasn't in here, so I just added it to the motion, so it's all good, you know, if you want.
You did, I heard that.
Put the plan in motion.
And, and, and you did Middleton, and then North Reading. Which is great. Um, is, is, uh, Bruce coming in today or not?
No, um, they've given us a, an email requesting to you, since we don't have the peer review report yet.
Just read the motion.
You have a, a motion to, to, uh, extend it, or?
Uh, to continue.
Continue, okay.
Just continue.
Yeah.
Our next meeting?
Mr., uh, Mr. Redloff.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to continue the public hearing for one forty-sixth through one fifty Park Street until Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, at eight thirty P M.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Ryan? Is he awake?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Redloff?
Aye.
Mr. Johnston?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hayden is aye, that would be unanimous. So we are, anything else, Danielle, what else we have?
Um, we, actually, we got some, uh, correspondence regarding a transportation committee at this level. Um, is, were you creating, anyone that wants to say that?
Yeah, so, I'm apparently the liaison.
Please come up and s- sit next to the mic.
So I'm apparently the liaison to this committee being formed. Mr. Wallner brought it to our attention, something that, um, he feels would be a real benefit to the town, um, as far as there could be grant money and things like that. And obviously, we all know this transportation issue in this town, it's something that's much needed. Um, so, we have decided to form this transportation committee, um, and get a member from, from your committee to liaison. So we were hoping to get a vote, to get somebody to come on to this with us, and get it moving.
We're hoping for that tonight? We haven't had a minute to talk about it, so.
What, um, how, like, what's the composition of it, is it just like you said, from every board and, and or commission?
I don't think every, every.
Not every, but I mean.
Probably the boards that have.
The boards that would have some, yeah, some relevance.
So would, would the goal, would, would, is there a stated goal, or would the goal, would this be to, just to pursue grants and things like that?
Well, to pursue, um, a transportation means, you know, for the community, which we really struggle with. We did have, um, Mike Prisco, when he was, um, on the committee, did get, um, something going, but the contract, the, the date is up, and they're not going to renew it.
But the ride that he did?
Yeah. So, well, the ride, not the ride, not the MBTA, but, um, you know, MRV, MRVT.
The, the, Merrimack Valley.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that is not gonna continue?
Is that just for seniors, or was it really for anyone?
I think it was just seniors, I don't know.
Seniors and disabled veterans.
Disabled veterans, yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not just.
So we, did, was that grant, was that via grant money, and that's just right?
I don't know the logistics of that.
It was repurposed MBTA assessment money, so we lose, well, money is taken off the cherry sheet every year anyway for the MBTA assessments for an adjacent community, even though we don't have the services in town. So part of that was repurposed to redirect it to the MBRTA, to pay for the services that they could give them or credit. And from what I understand, they're still offering service, but it's very, very different, and really not in a form that.
They've changed, they've changed the form out of it.
Yeah, it's changed so much that it won't be useful to a lot of people who aren't using it.
Right, correct.
So the goal might be to try to get that bus that goes from Lawrence, comes right through here, and just impugns us, stop some ways.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
That would be nice, so, you know, um, get some ideas and, and get some plans in action. Um, it, it's a real problem here, you know, for the seniors, for the veterans, for the, you know, getting to anything out of town, you know?
I know there's been some, there's been some work done on it, I think, I'm trying to remember, I know we tried something like this before, and they just basically stated shut us down.
Yeah, the MBTA will not.
Yeah. And everybody just shut us down.
Because we don't pay into it, so we, yeah, they won't put the ride in here, and I know that personally, because my brother-in-law is legally blind, can't drive, and my mother-in-law would watch his son, and he would have to get dropped off in Reading, or in, you know, on the outskirts.
And we wouldn't mind paying if they had, if they gave us service, even when we paid, they gave us no service.
That's right.
They gave us no service even when we were paying as a serviced community. The ride was still not coming here.
Right.
And they wouldn't stop the bus here to pick up, it, it just, it makes no sense, and they wanted us to pay big, big bucks. But we were paying big bucks.
So, you know, if we have a, an official committee, and we can get some ideas and get some plan, and, and try to work on something and get something going.
I'm kinda maxed out.
I know, it's hard, it's the same thing with our, but we're on so many committees, it, it's, it's difficult, I know, but, um, we're feeling like this is important.
Feeling the same way, I'm just, I don't have the time to commit, um, personally. But, I would be, you know, if a meeting is held, it would be something that, if we have enough notice, that I think probably a lot of us might go to, just, I can't commit to be a, you know, a member of it personally, you know, there's that too much going on. It's hard, making it here.
Yeah.
We all.
Yeah, I know, and you too, and so, I say that, and everybody, including Danielle, gets it, everyone.
Yeah, I, we do get it, you know?
We're all the same way.
And appreciate everything that everybody does. Would you like me to, because honestly, I don't have all the details myself.
Yeah, getting the details would be really important.
So why don't I?
To see what responsibility and how often gonna meet.
I planted the seed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Days you're thinking of, I don't know.
Danielle can put in one of our meetings, or something kind of, to be discussed.
And I'll get, I'll, I'll try to get as much detail as I can.
Well, we might want, what we might try to do, it's good, an idea would be to have, like, two people, so that you can swap.
Yeah.
So it's not always.
Right, that works, that, that's.
I was just gonna say that, too.
Yeah.
Is just have somebody from our commission.
Right.
You know, with, maybe, way we can share it.
I can make that suggestion.
Coming up, to say, can you make it, yeah, I'll, I'll make this one, you make the next one.
I, I know, I could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we do with the EDC, there's a, there's a voting member, and there's a non-voting member, yeah, so if one can't make it. Um, so why don't we do that, maybe put it on the next agenda, and I'll make sure that I have more specifics for you?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, thanks very much for.
Thank you for caring about it, too.
Yeah.
Really important. Um, so, I think we're out of.
David, I think we are, what, that's.
Out of the business part now, right, or, actually, no, 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 we have a, a view. So, what were our actions?
I don't think we are ready to. I don't think we are ready to really discuss it at this meeting. Um, I have a draft that I'm working on and gonna just discuss with Jerry. I've talked to him about some of the points that we talked to last meeting.
Yeah, I would talk to him and get his sign off.
Yeah.
And then bring it back, you know, once he's, if he's okay with it, he likes, but if he doesn't like something in it, let's get it out.
Oh, sure.
You know, Redline had sent it to us so we can see it again.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah.
That was something you were, you were looking for, right, Warren?
Yeah, I, I, um-
Making sure he was on board with it?
Yeah, very much so.
Cause he's, he's the one that's gotta, he's the one that's gotta deal this.
I've spent some time talking to Jerry about this a number of times. He didn't tend to be.
Yep.
Um, but that, you know, I, I mean, it's such a, it's such a difficult thing, uh, because the state laws and all the things kind of hence, hence, they, they can you in, so it's really hard to do anything that, that, um, couldn't be legally challenged.
Right.
Yeah.
That's an issue, so that'd be the case, we're doing. So.
And maybe we shouldn't be doing anything.
So the last time we, Jerry was there on the fifteenth, right, from my notes. Is that what you have, Danielle? And then went over, and I have my notes on a couple of different things. But, so then you're just, you're just, you kinda updated it based on that and you talked about, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've updated the draft. I need to just kinda sit down with Jerry to be sure that, um, all the concerns were addressed and that all the concerns that all of you had were addressed in a way that works for him.
Works for him, right.
Is it something that you'll just throw on the sheriff file or just send, say, I got the draft up or?
We have a folder all the time.
I can, I can make it a folder by itself.
Just, so then we could just comment, you know, prior to, but then have a meeting, I mean, but.
Mm-hmm.
Then we go into sheriff files, just go into folders and see it and pull that folder up.
Right.
Sure.
Okay.
And then I can put it on the next agenda for a real discussion once I do that.
Yeah.
Come here.
Danielle, Ryan, do you have anything going on?
He's got unmuted, so. And then, uh, no Z B A, I noticed, so.
Not this time, no.
Are they, I didn't look online, but are they end of this month? I think they, I noticed this, I think the next-
I'm not, I'm not sure when their next meeting is.
Twelve, like, we're-
Twelve?
It is, for twelve, okay. I'm gonna make that one.
So you're, you're, you're full of information, Phil, thank you.
I got it either, well.
Oh, I almost thought Debbie gave me things to be signed.
Well, then bring them over, girl.
Any other, like, um, updates? To? On your end or?
No, I, I've been out for a week and a half, so I really don't have anything to write.
Should I?
Just getting caught up.
I'll try and get back into here.
I know. I was in such a fog today.
Yeah. Um.
I'd start off all my meetings better.
Yeah, don't ask any tough questions, please.
I do have some things to decide though, um,
We didn't do much.
We usually, we usually sign this, right?
Did yard work.
Well, that, anybody, they can start that.
Oh, that's true.
I have to sign yours.
Okay.
Yours I have to sign.
Oh, God. Okay, and then these, do you want me to kinda just pass them out?
You need, uh, just three, so the chairman, you need a chairman and two others.
Okay.
So you're, you have to do two of them. You have to play someone that'll get cut out.
Yeah, well, most of the, um-
See, I have to look through these because I know-
I'm gonna cut these all gold on, so it's not really our big deal, um. But, um, just to get the ball on and make sure they all still work.
Right. So Warren and I, so we need it.
Okay, great, thank you. So, thank you.
That's Warren.
I'm still going, I'm gonna make sure I get them all.
Wait, I have two, and then we need press.
Yes, P and A.
I was about to hand you the one, but.
You're, you're starting late January, the big, uh, that's when we-
Just sign on your time sheets.
Yes.
You can't sign, you, you can't sign anybody, you can't sign your own, can you?
Well, we have to sign our own in the
Yeah, you sign, no, you sign it yourself, but you can't approve your own.
No.
Do you need to sign it or that's all?
No, that's, that's done, yeah.
So then, is that this one?
And David, if I'm not around, you can sign as chair.
Okay.
All right? You can also sign off the Danielle, Danielle's time sheets. If, if Debbie needs them and I'm not here.
Yeah, if I'm around, okay. If I know that.
Those are the few things that you don't know until you-
I'm learn, I learn every, every meeting.
You learned something, right?
I should know better.
So the next meeting is, is January the twenty-fourth?
Yep.
All right, so-
Can I make a comment though, as, um, as we just kinda saw from, for today? I, I would hope you're in agreement, but and this, this is maybe a question out to Phil too, but is there a way for us to improve the Zoom thing here? Like, it's crazy.
This, I, I'm not happy with this.
Like, I just feel bad for the people because they're not hearing, like, it's, something's wrong, right?
Everything's echoing back, yeah.
Well, there's just something wrong.
Everything is here, echoing back.
How do we, how do we do this better? Because I almost feel like
Yeah.
if we can't shut them off, it's just super, and this is in A and R, like, imagine when it's something more, a little bit more contentious. I mean, this is just-
I, I really don't know.
It's the hybrid thing that's a problem.
It's very hard, um-
It's not-
Do we not, do we, and I don't mean to, like, I'm just throwing out, but do we not do it anymore? And just they have to come here?
It's up to you. I mean, we did that for a long time.
We did that for a while.
Because I totally get, like, Z B A is one hundred percent Zoom, so it's easy. You're on Zoom.
They're done on the twelfth, all right.
Everyone's, you know, we're all used to Zoom, but when it's the hybrid thing, unless it's like it's really difficult, like, I really felt bad for the people at home because they're piping in, they don't know, you know, they probably can't even hear, you know?
I know. I don't know, um, it's up to you if you wanna continue meeting hybrid or you wanna go back to-
Well, here's my point, and I, I hate to be hard on them, but you're, you know, um, but why not, like, if we're here and all these other people here, the applicants here, like, why can't people show up? And I know it's not always convenient, but it's been like this for a hundred plus years
Yeah.
in town meetings and whatever, like, you've just gotta be here, you know?
Except I, I really found that we, when we were all Zoom, we had so much more participation.
Totally, but like, let's go back to Zoom, you know, and then we'll just, you know?
To the point where-
Jeremiah, I'll be in our shorts and our nice dress shirt, you know what I mean, with flip flops on, you know?
Just all of us were Zooming right off, right here, it would work better. You know, so, so-
So therefore-
Somebody needs to take that information and try to handle a solution.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta figure out how to do it
Yeah.
better.
You know, we didn't have all the echo on the, on the other-
Danielle, so you can just mute, you know, you can just mute everybody?
I, I eventually did mute individually, um, I just have to be careful not to mute the wrong thing because if I mute myself,
Right.
we have a problem. And then if I mute the person who's trying to speak, and I, it, it's not always a hundred percent clear who's-
And is there a way to like, um, I know this is another getting out there, but and I, I see this on all my Zoom calls, but when someone just calls in, you know, you just get the number, even just Ryan, you know? And I can't recall, like, when you're calling in, is there, isn't there the option to put in your name? Um, yeah.
If you're on your iPad, you can.
Yeah.
Or on a computer, you can, but when you're on a phone, it's difficult.
It's not, cause that, my Zoom thing, when I do Zoom and I'm, it's an app, you know, but I go on, it's-
On your phone?
Yeah.
Cause you're using a smartphone, that's why.
So maybe that's-
You gotta, that's a computer.
But still-
Same as a computer.
I'm just saying, like, what would really help, and maybe it's just a notice when they get on Zoom, is that, like, can you type up your name? Cause then we'd see when it shows up, instead of this number blaring, like, they're trying to get through and then what's your name? Yeah, I don't think Zoom does that though. If you're calling in, it's super old school. You're just getting the number. And I'm guessing that a lot of people participating are doing it purely on the phone. Got it.
Right, and Ryan's, and Ryan's calling and he's not on the, he's not on the app. I've been, I've been on the app before on my phone.
Yeah. So these are just-
So who I am.
So Jeremiah, these are just pure calls, yeah, I, I get, yeah, I can't really do that.
These are, these are phone calls, they're calling that number for-